Suspend discussion on 100.
Yes, yes, Mr. Speaker, there is. I'm just waiting for a couple of more information. If you can just set it aside until the information is received and then we'll get back to it.
All right, thank you. Then the Chair will suspend discussion on 100. We'll move to Bill 138, followed by Resolution 127. Then we'll go to 107, and then Senator Rodriguez's bills. Speaker Pangolino, you're recognized.
Thank you, and Sidus Massey, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I'd like to move that Bill 138-32COR introduced as amended by the Committee on Appropriations, Public Debt, Legal Affairs, Retirement, Public Parks, Recreation, Historic Preservation, and Land, an act to amend Section 1515i2g, Article 5, Chapter 1, Title 5, of the Guam Code annotated, relative to the repair and improvements of the Guam Fisherman's Co-op. Now standing the House rules that this be placed in the third reading file and that I be allowed to discuss the bill briefly.
Hearing no objection.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, if you recall, when you introduced the bill to provide resources to the visitor industry for the improvements and of our visitor facilities on Guam, as well as construction of the Guam Museum was the main project to be funded out there, that because we were able to float a bond over and above what was required for the Guam Museum, the residual proceeds of the bond after deducting the $27 million budget for the museum were then allocated to fund certain public service projects and rehabilitation of our visitor industry infrastructure. And these included things like the repair of the Plaza de España, the walls, the chocolate house, putting in some new signs throughout our island to enhance the experience and the utility and ease of navigating around the island by our tourism visitors, and many other projects, of which one was the Guam Farmers Co-op. In addition, we also came back and responding to the needs of the Guam Fisherman's Co-op, who had been given authority and jurisdiction over the property at the Gregorio Perez Marina here in Agania, for the construction and repair and rehabilitation of their facilities. And initially, on testimony provided by the Guam Fisherman's Co-op, the support to be given to the Guam Fisherman's Co-op was in the form of a loan from GIDA. After working through the processes, we still haven't been able to facilitate the loan process from GIDA, and the Fisherman's Co-op realizing that they can actually move faster if they had a matching grant or match or funding that they could then match with commercial loan to get the entire amount needed for the construction of their facility. And so this bill would amend then the authorization for the use of the bond proceeds from a $5 million grant, loan, out of the GIDA revolving fund from the proceeds of the bond, to a grant of no less than $5 million for the purpose of construction, repair, and improvement of facilities as part of the Greg D. Perez Economic Master Plan. The funds then authorized in this section shall be used to, no funds shall be used to pay for the Guam Economic Development Authority of its contracted consultants. When the hot bonds was floated, GIDA went out and the first thing they did was hire a project management consultant, and they took over $2 million off the top in order to fund the, the project management consultant, which, when we look at that cost, it really is excessive, but they entered into a contract unbeknownst to the legislature at that time. I think had we known that that was their intention, we certainly would have debated of how much is appropriate and whether or not they should be authorized to do so. In addition, of course, GIDA received its fees for floating the bonds. But what's happening is that because there are multiple projects being funded, besides taking money off the top, now they're coming back and saying, for every single project, they're going to take even more money out of money for the project construction for, again, additional project management funds for the project manager that they hired. So in addition to the $2 million or $2.1 million, there, for example, in the Guam Farmers Co-op, of the money provided for that project, they're taking an additional $400,000 out of now the construction fund to give to the project manager to manage that project, which they already received $2.1 million for the entire amount of the proceeds of the bond. And that really should have covered every single project on that list. It shouldn't be a overall amount based on the total cost of the proceeds plus more money out of the every single project. So GIDA took its fees the off the top, the project management took its fees off the top, and so what we're saying is, they shouldn't be taking any more fees out of the construction fund for these projects. So that's what that means. Then, since we authorize up to $5 million, what this bill would do then is appropriate only $2.5 million of that $5 million that was reserved for the Fisherman's Co-op, and this was based on the testimony given at the last public hearing. The Guam Fisherman's Co-op President, Mr. Manny Duñez, came and testified that they really have a shovel-ready project. Had the project been funded, you know, four, five years ago, when they had, they have all of their building plans, they have their engineering plans, they have their permits, but because of the time lapse, they're going to have to modify those plans. And, and so what this does is, it would provide them $2.5 million, and the modification of those building plans and projects and needed, and the expertise needed to secure the permits based on the updated plans, would then be taken out of this $2.5. That's why we increased it from $2 million to $2.5 million, to cover that additional work required by project engineers and by the architectural and archaeological services that would be required. And so then this money shall be deposited into a subaccount of the trustee. The trustee is holding the cash of these proceeds, and they are able to disperse them based on the drawdown schedule for the projects once they get into construction phase or contractual phase. And so we would now have $2.5 million set aside, deposited into a subaccount of the trustee for the construction, repair, and improvements of the Guam Fisherman's Co-op facilities. And then the services or contracts associated with the construction improvements under this grant shall require the approval of the Guam Fisherman's Co-op. Now, when it comes to dispersing the funds, one of the GIDA's concerns was, I know we're giving it to a nonprofit entity, but we should be able to track it. We should be able to take a look at what is being dispersed and compare it to the contracts and so forth. And so we are, and the Fisherman's Co-op says, we don't mind doing that. We don't mind somebody working with us, looking it over, making sure we're doing the right thing. So we're also adding as part of the condition of this, that dispersments for the payment of expenses associated with the construction, repair, the Fisherman's Co-op, shall be approved by the Fisherman's Co-op, and it has to be countersigned by GIDA. So we have a check and balance there. And then the proceeds of the grant must be expended or encumbered by the Fisherman's Co-op for the purpose provided here, no later than July 31, 2015. So just as we gave some time for the Farmers Co-op to begin their construction, we're also saying that the Fisherman's Co-op, because of any additional modifications that may be required on their existing building plans, which are four or five years old, that they need to move and get construction going by 2015 of July. And Fisherman's Co-op, though, is eager for this project to move, and according to testimony provided to us, the President of the Fisherman's Co-op is very confident that they could be breaking ground in, in anywhere between three and six months, so that we can actually begin to see the improvements at the Paseo area that is currently occupied by the Guam Fisherman's Co-op. And that, basically, Madam Speaker, there are reporting requirements, that they shall report to the Governor and the Speaker on a quality basis, all the expenditures of this grant, and the other funds secured by the Fisherman's Co-op for the construction, repair, and improvements to its facilities until the grant is fully expended and facility construction, repair, and improvements are completed. And so what will occur is, this $2.5 million will be coupled with and partnered with funds that the Fisherman's Co-op will raise through either grants or a commercial loan, which they say they've gotten some preliminary interests and assurances from local financing institutions that are going to be, that are favorable to giving to them that. With this $2 million grant, or $2.5, the leverage of the financing provided by the Fisherman's Co-op versus commercial financing, should it go that route, would provide almost a 50-50 match, or they would be providing almost 50% in equity to the construction of the project, which is very favorable when looked upon by banks for financing the balance of the $2 million to $2.5 million required for full build-out of the facility. In addition, when they go for federal grants, which they have begun looking into, and are pretty optimistic that there may be additional matching grants out there that they can provide with then leverage this $2.5 million, that they may be able to get additional nonrecourse grants also from other federal institutions and federal programs for the, to go towards the construction of the facility. Madam Speaker, if, if those of you who were at the hearing saw the emotional appeal given by the Fisherman's Co-op, not for themselves as fishermen, but for what they have been able to do and provide and assist our community through the organization that they have. As they mentioned, never once, when anybody comes requesting assistance from the Co-op itself, the donations they make, the team partnerships they've built with our local institutions, the educational programs and internship programs that they provide to our young people, both on Guam and throughout the region, these are the things that happen behind the scenes and the contributions the Fisherman's Co-op makes to the people of Guam. And all they're asking is for us to continue to support them, that this is vital to their continued existence. It allows them greater opportunity to then provide a facility that makes the marina much more useful for commercial activity. Part of the improvement would be to make it safer for boaters to use the, the marina, because they'll put in a certified fueling station that would prevent spills and allow and not require people who want to gas up their boat to bring 55-gallon drums and pump them through hoses down to the boat. It'll provide, they'll provide that service to the boating community on Guam, to our parasail boats and such that service our tourism industry. So that's why we feel that this assistance to the Fisherman's Co-op and this support for them will go a long way toward enhancing the quality of life for our people who enjoy and, and benefit from the healthy bounty of their catch from the sea, to our tourism industry representatives and users of the Agania Boat Basin for supporting the water sports industry of our tourism sector, that it'll all be beneficial all around. And so, once again, I ask my colleagues for their favorable consideration on this bill, and we will then kind of ensure that we're working on the Farmers Co-op right now, and this will provide our opportunity for those that don't make their land, their living and livelihood, and support their family, and augment their income from the land, but those that choose to do so from the sea. Thank you, and Sidus Massey, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome. On the motion, Senator McCready.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I rise in full support of this bill, and I commend the former Speaker for his forward thinking when it comes to the Guam Fisherman's Co-op. I use the Co-op every weekend, and they have done some renovations to the Co-op as far as where the, the boats dock, but there is still a lot of work that needs to be done. I'm also a member of the Guam Fisherman's Co-op, and I think those guys work very hard and diligent to make sure that the, the people who use the Co-op get their gas, like he said, and, and get their fish, and the water sports gas their boats. So I think it's a very vital part of our, of not just our island heritage, but, but our tourism industry as well. I would, I did have a question I would like to yield, and, and the reason why I ask this question is because I'm, I'm not sure if, if we can do this or if it's possible, but on, on page two, where it says the, the unexpended authorization shall be subject to legislative reappropriation.
What line?
That would be 27, ma'am, Madam Speaker. So my question would be, in order to avoid, in another three or four or five years, when, when the Guam Co-op may need some more money, would it be possible for us to then just to, to rather reappropriate these funds, to just leave the funds with the Fisherman's Co-op, so if they do need the funds, that, that they could use it then, maybe like a set aside, rather than just reappropriate it somewhere else? Because I'm sure they're going to need the money in, in the future. So that's my question.
Do you yield to the question, your Speaker?
Yes, Madam Speaker. We, we thought about that, and what, what this does is, the Fisherman's Co-op have assured us that $2.5 is, actually, they were looking at two, but then when they came back and said they reviewed their plans and that they have to make some modifications, we decided to add another half a million to accommodate for any of that increased cost. And that, that should suffice, that they have done all the other legwork to get the additional money and the balance. And so, because we still have other projects on the list of eligible projects to be funded from the hot bond proceeds, we're just saying that $2 million would, $2.5 would go to the Fisherman's Co-op, and then we'll come back and look at the other projects and see whether or not those other projects, based on the estimates that they have provided for how much it's going to cost to implement, that those may be required to be increased, some of them. And so that's where the $2.5 million could then go. Once they get a clearer picture and, and better estimates on those, then we'll come back and reallocate that money. And, again, that, that's also GIDA's position in terms of, it allows us then the flexibility to take a look at the other projects that were authorized, and when we need additional money in those projects, we can then take this balance and give it to them. So that's why we did it. And we pressed the Fisherman's Co-op. Are you sure this is it? You're going to do this? You know, because we also still have these other projects that are authorized, and they said, we're very, very confident that $2.5 million will get us going and we'll have the other balance from our, for our own resources.
Senator McCready, would you?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Yes, that does answer my question, and I, and I, and I know that the, that the author of this bill, his intention is to make sure that everything is, is, is spent in the right place. So I do, I do support this legislation, and I also urge our, our colleagues to support it as well. Thank you very much.
You're welcome, Senator. On the motion, Senator Limptiaco, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I rise in full support of this bill, and I commend the author for recognizing the importance of not only supporting the farmers and fisheries, but also for recognizing the economic advantages of developing our marinas. I've seen the renderings of the facility that the Co-op will produce, and, and it's exciting. You know, I've, I've had the opportunity to live in the mainland for 17 years and travel quite extensively, and it, it, the, the areas in which I lived and traveled to, the marinas were a bastion for economic activity, and they were just brimming with so much economic activity. I could see this, you know, 10 years down the line, or hopefully sooner, that this entire, or what this, what this appropriation will do in the development of our Fisherman's Co-op, will, is just the first, the, the planting of the seed for that entire area, and for that entire area, the Paseo area, as well as the Agania Boat Basin, to be further developed and, and, and just brim with economic activity that it provides, not only for a place for our locals to, to go, but also for our tourists to go. And, you know, during the public hearing, it was, it was mentioned that this facility will also provide, you know, areas for our tourists to have a safe place to, to load the boats and, and the parasailing equipment, much like what the prior speakers have alluded to. Now, I, when I first started running for office, my dad always used to tell me about the late Governor Ricardo Bredalo and his vision for this entire area, as well as for other areas in Guam, and he always mentioned how underdeveloped or undeveloped our marinas are, and, and this piece of legislation is a step in the right direction. I, I fully support it, and I, and I hope that all of our aspirations and, and what we envision for this area can just, this initial development can be the impetus for the development of that entire area, so that we can really have a, a marina that provides economic opportunities for all of our people on Guam. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome, Senator. On the motion, Senator Tomada.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I certainly rise in support of the bill. However, I would, if the author would yield, I have several questions, maybe he could clarify to help me better understand. The first question that I have is on page one, on line four there. Now, initially, when the law was initially passed, it was to provide a loan to the Fisherman's Co-op, but now we're changing that basically to a grant and saying, here's the money to do what you need to do to improve that facility. And that's, that's fine. I have no problem with that. I have, I have a concern about the, the language, though. It says that, "for purposes of issuing a grant of no less than $5 million to the Guam Fisherman's Co-op." So when I read that, then, the $5 million is a floor, and if then, as we progress, you know, in the upgrading project, if they came back and says, oh, we need $7 million, then, you know, it, it's basically like a blank check. And, and that maybe if, if that was changed to a grant of no more than $5 million, then we know that $5 million is being allocated for the Guam Fisherman's Co-op. So before I, you know, move to, to make an amendment to that, maybe if the author would yield to maybe clarify just what was the intent there.
Senator, do you yield to the question? Speaker Pangolino?
Yes, Madam Speaker. I think Senator Ada brings up a valid point, when, because when it was a loan, it would be no less than five. We want, we wanted to give them what it would cost to construct, and so now that we're giving a, a grant that is less than five, we should, I, I would have no objection to saying no more than $5 million.
So, Madam Speaker, thank you very much. So, Madam Speaker, then I would move then that we change on line four, change that language then to read, "for purposes of issuing a grant of no more than $5 million."
On the amendment, Senator Munia Barnes, and then Senator Respecho.
Madam Speaker, I understand the concerns in reference to the issuing of the loan when we first initiated this in the 27th Guam Legislature, and when this bill first came into place, and it was for a loan, and now we're looking at a grant, but maybe the question I'd like to ask, not the author of the amendment, but the author of the legislation, is, have, have the breakdowns been done to secure that they're not going to need more than $5 million for this project, based on the schematics that were presented? I know that since six, seven years ago, there, there have been some changes, but I just want to make sure that we don't, again, shortchange the Co-op, the Fisherman's Co-op, in having moved forward for this program, because it's been that long.
Do you yield to the question? Speaker Pangolino?
Yes, Madam Speaker. In, in our multiple discussions with the Fisherman's Co-op, they do say that if we give them $2.5, or $2 million, but $2.5 with the additional modifications that may be required, that the balance of their construction will be funded from either a commercial loan or from additional grants that they're leveraging. So $2.5 will give them, you know, much greater opportunity to secure commercial loan or additional grants, when they have that as part of their capital contribution to the project. So that's the response to that.
Senator Barnes, was you able to answer your question?
Sidus Massey, I'd like to thank the Speaker for giving me that answer, and based on his answer, then I don't have a problem with the amendment.
Senator Respecho, you're recognized. On the amendment?
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Good morning. I, I certainly understand the, the reason for the amendment, but my concern is if you say no more than $5 million, GIDA might just give a $100,000 grant. And so if we can establish a floor and a ceiling, because in the next paragraph, it talks about $2.5 million, which, from the proceeds should be, you know, and what to do with it and how it's to be handled administratively, but for, if you say, "for purposes of issuing grant of no more than $5 million," I'm just concerned that GIDA might just give them $100,000 or a dollar and call it a day. And so if we could work to tighten up that language a little better.
Speaker Pangolino?
I think, oh, was that a?
Go ahead. Somebody.
Yeah. That would be taken care of in the, because we're authorizing issuing a grant of no more than $5 million, but in the later portion of that same section, we then appropriate $2.5.
Yeah.
So they will, that's to be deposited to the account, so they will get that $2.5 account.
Well, that's what I talked about in a, in a new parag, another paragraph, there's a, a mention of $2.5 million, but is it okay then to just say no more than $5 million?
Yes.
And it'd be clear that GIDA will make available $2.5 million?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
So on the Ada amendments, or anyone else who would like to speak on it? Senator, would you like to close then on your amendment?
No, well, I, I've got.
Okay, so we'll take the vote on that then. There being no objections to the amendment to change it from less to more. So ordered.
Thank you. Madam Speaker, now, I'm, I'm a little confused about, first, we talk about issuing a grant of no more than $5 million, and then we're only appropriating $2.5 million. So then where's the other $2.5 million going to?
Speaker Pangolino, do you yield to the question?
The $2.5 would then be available to be, because the, the project list they gave us and the allocation of the estimates, they set aside $5 million for the Fisherman's Co-op, and then they set aside, you know, $3 million for the Plaza de España, $100,000 for signs, and all of the other authorized projects in that list. So the balance of the $2.5 then becomes unallocated. And when the projects start to go out for bid, or their engineering estimates get tighter, they'll find, for example, that the Plaza de España, which initially they allocated for $3 million, when the project engineer or even the bids come in, let's say it comes in at $3.5, then that $2.5 becomes available for the legislature to then reallocate the another $500,000 of that $2.5, to then fund the total construction cost of the Plaza de España. So, and it'll be then back at the legislature to reallocate that $2.5 to the other projects, should there be shortfalls in the other projects. That's the way this is written and intended.
Senator Ada?
Well, I'm not, I'm not sure that really clarifies it, because really, when you take a look at that section of the law, of Title 5, Chapter 1, Article 5, Section, basically, my reading of the law is that $41.5 million was allocated to perform various projects, the restoration of the walls of the Plaza de España, et cetera, et cetera. And then, within that $41.5 million, we had actually, was actually set aside what was initially supposed to be a loan to the Guam Fisherman's Co-op, which eventually, as it, I guess as it pays back that loan, was going to go into I guess as it pays back that loan, was going to go into some other fund.
Right. Outside of the restoration projects and all that.
But I guess, I guess I'm just trying to reconcile, first, we say we're going to give them a grant of no more than $5 million. Why don't we just say, we're going to give them a grant of 2.5 million and that's what we are appropriating to them? So I'm just confused by, in the one section, in the front, we're saying, we're going to give them a grant of no more than $5 million, but we're only appropriating 2.5 and which then leaves, you know, $2.5 million. So basically then, if actually we just say, we're going to give them a grant of 2.5 million, then we know that there's 39 or whatever that's going to be available for all the other projects. So that, I'm kind of confused with that. I mean, the fact that on this, on page two, we are appropriating the 2.5 million, it seems that to be consistent, we should just simply say, we are giving a grant of 2.5 million and we are appropriating that now for their use. So, and, and again, I'm saying, I'm not, I'm not certain and that's why I'm asking the author to yield because there may be something there that I'm missing as to why we're saying in the front, a grant of $5 million, but then we're only appropriating $2.5.
Would you like the author to respond to your question?
Well, and, and basically unless there's an impact that I don't understand as to if we were to change then on page one, line four, that language to read, for purposes of issuing a grant of 2.5 million to the Guam Fishermen's Co-op. And that's it. He's got $2.5 million to go and do what he needs to do.
Speaker, do you, do you yield to the question to try to explain?
Again, Madam Speaker, the reason why we're doing it this way is that the projects are funded according to the priority as outlined in the enabling legislation is correct. So there's, for example, the project of the Farmer's Co-op. Now, the Farmer's Co-op had no amount attached to it and all of the projects had no amount attached. They were all to be funded from $41 million. What GIDA has done since that time is they have gone back and looked at all of those projects from A to Z and then allocated based upon the review by the project managers and initial review of, of the, of the GovGuam agencies that are going to be working on those projects. For example, the Tumon flooding. So the original estimate on the Tumon flooding was 4.8 million when it was originally being discussed as needing it. Now they're allocating $11 million for that project. And so they've taken all of the projects and, and assigned an allocation to come up to the 41. So when you take a look at all of the allocation based on that, the bottom line says, there's $41 million and so forth, which includes $5 million for the Farmer's Co-op. Because, I mean, Fisherman's Co-op. And so what they're doing now is they're working with greater engineering designs now. They've actually gone into the design phase. They're going into the bid phase and so forth. So what we're doing is that until such time that we get the final numbers on those projects, we may have to change the allocation of the, of the funds from, and we may have to take them from other projects if they don't have enough money. So if there's a cost overrun on project number one, two, and three, rather than not allocating, rather than allocating that and just putting it into the, back into the $41 million pot, the legislature may want to come back and take a look at those projects and maybe reprioritize them. And then based upon a reprioritization, we can then take 2.5 and, and move project number 10. If we decide at a later date, based on the money available, then number 10 really we want to do and we don't have enough money based upon the allocations. And so we would come back and take from the 2.5, just hold it in reserve and be unallocated at this time. And so allow us then to, to have it to go to project number 10 instead of going to project number two. And, and again, it's just the flexibility for the legislature in terms of allocating those funds and prioritizing the projects at a later time when we get a clearer picture of what the costs are going to be for each of those projects. So I was just trying to reserve the legislature's authority over the appropriation and the allocation of those funds based upon the projects and maybe a reallocation of the priority of the project. So all I was trying to do was preserve that legislative purview over that money to allow this body to make that decision.
All right. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. My primary concern, of course, is that, that $2.5 million is made available for the Fishermen's Co-op to work on their facility over there. And I think with the language that we have, a concern, but, but I think with this $5 million that's mentioned on page one, line five, I think, I think that still causes, you know, some confusion. Because when you actually read the law, the only prioritization that it gives is that with this 68, $70 million bond that was issued, really the only order of priority was that out of that $70 million bond, the first $27 million will go to the museum. Then the balance of 41 will go to fund the following projects. But it doesn't say that you do the plaza rebuild first and you do this or that. It's basically a big pot of money to fund this list of projects, but it doesn't say you do this project first and then this and then this and then that.
Point of information, Madam Speaker.
Please state your point.
The Attorney General pursuant to my request reviewed that and issued an opinion, a legal opinion, that says, no, the projects have to be funded in the order of listing from, project A is first, project B is second, project C is third. Even though we don't assign a dollar figure, the way that the statute is written, the Attorney General and, and the Guam Visitors Bureau knows this, the Guam Economic Development knows this, the project manager knows this, because I provided them a copy of that Attorney General's opinion that says, no, you fund the projects according to the listing of priority in the bill.
Well, that's, I think that's a significant piece of information because based on that information that's been provided, then it's possible then that by the time they get down that list of priorities, that there might not be enough money then to fund, to provide that grant to the Fishermen's Co-op unless we put language that, you know, notwithstanding what's perceived to be a priority list, off the top, $2.5 million goes to the Fishermen's Co-op and then we start doing this pecking order stuff. And, and so I, I think that's, that's a, you know, a significant revelation that we may very much end up with nothing for the Fishermen's Co-op and I think we probably need to tweak that.
Again, Madam Speaker, very, very, very possible. But when we looked at the allocation of the listing of the projects based upon GIDA, DPW and the project management team, and they took the known information at this time and allocated the money, that they took money and allocated it and based upon their best guess at this time, it totals 41, which includes $5 million for the co-op, Fishermen's Co-op, which I think is number five or six now on that project list. I'm not sure.
It's pretty far down the list.
No. Well, and so based on that allocation, there would be enough money, but unless there's significant cost overruns in the top, it's very possible that yes, by the time you get down there. We already know we're starting with, with the Farmer's Co-op and the Farmer's Co-op is getting its money, its contracts are, will be signed and so forth. So we know that that allocation is set and we know what we're going to spend on that. So that number is firm. And so I, I don't mind. I don't mind him saying, notwithstanding the order of priority listed, 2.5 on this date shall be set aside for the Fisherman's Co-op.
Okay, so moved. No, I, I, I think that's probably the language then that will assure that out of this 41 million, you take off from the top, $2.5 million for the Fishermen's Co-op. So maybe, I don't know if the clerk caught that, and, and I think that that's an amendment that, that should be made.
Wait, wait, you're right. So you're saying you're making that amendment now then so that?
Well, I think that the language that, that the, the author of the bill suggested, I think would basically satisfy that concern.
Okay, so, all right. What, what we'll do then is that, we'll have you go ahead and continue with your discussion and questioning and other amendments. Meanwhile, we'll have legal counsel then work with the amendment that can be officially then presented to the body.
Okay.
So Senator, you may continue.
Okay. Madam Speaker, on, on page two, line 21, well, of course, starting there on line 19, it says that any of the services or the contracts or expenses will be approved, will require the approval of the Fishermen's Co-op. And so then when it comes time for disbursement, it's going to require the approval by the Fishermen's Co-op and then countersign by GIDA. Now, I don't know if then, if, I guess the way I read that is that disbursement is going to be contingent upon these two signatures, having these two signatures. And, and I guess a concern that I have here is sometimes, you know, paperwork that goes in could sit on somebody's desk for weeks. And so dispersments don't get done on a timely manner because we're waiting for that second signature. But really, GIDA's signature on that disbursement request is really just so that they can track it, so that they can say, okay, now they're spending this much money and we can subtract that from, from the total amount. So it's just not clear based on this, if then disbursement is going to be contingent upon the signature from GIDA or maybe what might be to achieve really the objective of having GIDA's signature there, simply say that for every disbursement, GFCA shall submit a, a disbursement report to, to GIDA or something to that effect so that, so that the disbursement of that payment is not delayed unnecessarily. However, if the comfort level of the author is, is there regardless of that language, I, I'll go with that too. Yes, please.
Speaker Pangolino?
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, we certainly looked at that, discussed it during the public hearing as well, and actually it was the Guam Fishermen's Co-op. They just, they want to be sure that they're spending the money according to the services that they contracted for and it's for the purpose of the implementing the project. And we also expressed some concern that if GIDA should need to approve or countersign that, but they also expressed to us their comfort level, that they want to ensure that the money, this legislative body and this government is paying for what is authorized according to the contracts for construction and services and that they had no problem they would work with GIDA to ensure that the payments are timely made and that they satisfy the requirement of ensuring that there is somebody else that's helped, that also looks over their shoulder, they don't mind that at all, because GIDA would just take a look at the contract and say, yes, this is covered under that contract. They don't want to be accused at some other time of sneaking expenditures into this project for their own operations and using government funds that's not authorized for them to use. So it was also for their own protection, they thought, that this, that we work out this counter-signature working in. They even suggested that they would probably enter into an MOU with GIDA on the approval of these things as well. So we expressed the same concerns, but they were very confident and they thought that this would also protect the Fishermen's Co-op and the integrity of the project and the funds.
Okay, fine. Thank you. And finally, the, the final concern that I have, Madam Speaker, which was also raised earlier by Senator McCready, on page two there, line 27, it's talking about, well, the Fishermen's Co-op is being given up to July 31, 2015, to either expend or encumber, or encumber this $2.5 million. First of all, there's, I think there's quite a big difference between expending. So they may have, you know, a million dollars sitting in there and if they don't expend that million dollars, then, then, then that goes, then that goes back into the big pot. Or if they have not encumbered it. But, you know, normally, in reality, I think what's going to happen is there's going to be this big rush to go and encumber it. And then it sits there again for, so if, if, as long as they encumber the funds by, by July 31, 2015, it can sit there until July 31, 2018 and it's still available. You know, so, so I think the, if, if the intent here was to make sure that you either use it or lose it by July 31, 2015, then that's one thing. Or if they are to encumber it, just like that was done with ERA funds, you encumber it July 31, 2015, but then you have to fully expend it by July 31, 2016. But otherwise, that money could be just sitting out there unused for as long as, as long as it takes to, to expend it. So again, with that, I would defer to the author if that's what we really intend to go out there and, because then there's no urgency. As long as you encumber it, there's no urgency after that to, to get it expended and bring that project to completion.
Would you like for?
I, I would, I would maybe suggest that the amount of the unencumbered, that by, if any funds authorized by this section remain unexpended or unencumbered after July 31, 2015, the amount of the unencumbered, unexpended shall be subject to legislative. Maybe on line 26, it should read, or unencumbered, I have to give this some thought, but I, I think we want to take a look at, it's one thing to encumber it on July 30, 2015, but we would still want to see some finality, you know, maybe a year later. And that is, I guess I'll have to work with legal counsel to see what kind of language we can put in there. The, the second concern that I have there in line 27, this, this phrase here, that the unexpended, unencumbered or unexpended authorization shall be subject to legislative Now, do we still want to use the term there, the unencumbered or unexpended authorization as opposed to changing that word to the unencumbered or unexpended appropriation? My understanding is that those two words have two very significant, there's a significant difference in the meaning of that.
First, to the $2.5 million balance. So the, you know, the five, from the $5 million, the 2.5 is now appropriated.
Yes.
So the unencumbered balance of the 2.5 million, after you subtract the appropriation, is what is authorized here, because we're authorizing a grant of no more than five.
Yeah.
So that's the balance. That's that $2.5 million balance.
Okay.
It would be then subject to legislative reappropriation.
But I, I thought we agreed earlier that, that we were going to change that language on page one to just simply say, for purposes of issuing a grant of $2.5 million to the Fishermen's Co-op.
Oh, I didn't.
Yeah, I thought that's what we discussed earlier, which the legal counsel was working on.
I thought it was discussing that we just make that money available now, no matter where they are in the priority.
Correct.
Right. 2.5 million.
Okay.
Oh, I, I wasn't aware it was, I mean, $5 million rather, not the 2.5.
I think maybe we need to take a recess here.
Take a recess.
Back in session. Senator Ada, you have an amendment?
Yes, Madam Speaker. I'd like to move, everybody's gotten a copy of the amendment? And basically, the amendment begins on page two, line 15, adding the sentence. In the front there would read, "Notwithstanding the order of priority requirement" in section 1515i2, and upon enactment. So, to put that phrase in, then it will read, "The sum of $2,500,000," then follows.
On the amendment, no objections? So ordered.
Thank you, Madam Speaker.
So, on the main motion, Senator Munia Barnes.
Ms. Msisi, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak and rise in full support of 138-32COR. To give the grant funding to the Fisherman's, Guam Fisherman's Cooperative. I want to say for the record, as we look at the history of working closely with the Fisherman's Co-op, I want to share with you that a lot of the infrastructure of getting this project through started back in the 27th Guam Legislature. And the good Speaker, Ben Panglinen, at that time, working closely with Senator John Canata, took great initiatives for assisting and coordinating and just collaborating a lot of the integral ingredients that were needed to push this co-op facility forward. And I want to share with you that as we fast forward to, again, 2013, so many years have passed. And I want to thank the good Speaker, the author of this legislation, for really, again, stepping up to the plate and seeing the vision to making sure that the resources are given to the Fisherman's Co-op so that we can be able to move and repair and improve on the facility that exists today with the Greg D. Paris Marina Master Plan. And I want to say that, once this is completed, and we hope it's going to be real soon, that the economic opportunities and the job creations that this project will have will truly make it more, make it a win for our community. And I rise in full support of this, and I just want to thank the author for moving this vision forward. Senator Msisi.
You're welcome, Senator. On the main motion, are there any other speakers? Speaker Ben, would you like to close?
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, before I close, I'd like to make one amendment. And that is on line 19, page 2. It currently reads, any services or contracts for expenses. I'd like to just change that for to or. So, it reads, any services or contracts or expenses associated with a construction repair and so forth.
So, on the amendment then, on the line 19, page 2, are there any objections? Objection sorted.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, once again, I want to thank my colleague for all of the discussion on this bill, and of course, for their support and understanding of what the bill seeks to do. I think it just is a testament to knowing that we are all concerned about our community and trying to enhance economic development, and the best way of making investments in how we do that. And I believe, and I'm very confident, that this is one of the better ways to do that. We're helping members of our community who supplement their income. Some make their living, their entire income and family living off fishing. And this will provide them with the needed facilities and the safety feature of being able to work in this industry. It also extends a partnership to the users of the marina that depend on servicing our tourists for water sports. That will provide them with a better loading dock for their commercial activity in addition to being able to safely fuel their boats. And these are just some of the small things, or the more evident things. I think it is to support a group of people who support this community in every way that they can. And I think this, along with what we're doing for the farmers, will certainly go a long ways to enhancing our local fishermen and farmers now, or farmers and fishermen now with this bill, in terms of providing opportunity and so forth. I'm also going to ask that we add Senator Tina Munia Barnes and Senator Mike Siniklas as co-sponsors on this bill.
On the amendment, without any objections, so ordered.
And then, to be then placed in the third reading file, Madam Speaker.
On the motion to place in the third reading file, without any objections, so ordered. Bill number 108, Senator Munia Barnes, you recognize.
Ms. Msisi, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I moved that Bill 108-32COR as introduced by myself. We moved to the third reading. And if I can discuss it, I'll try and be very brief.
Okay, Senator, you may proceed.
Ms. Msisi Tatlu, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, Bill number 108-32COR is an act to amend Sections 44103, 44105, 44108, 44114, and 44115 of chapter 44, Title X, Guam Code Annotated, and to repeal Sections 44106 and 44109 of chapter 44, Title X, Guam Code Annotated, and to amend section 45105 of chapter 45, Title X, Guam Code Annotated, and to amend section 51504 of chapter 51, Title X, Guam Code Annotated, relative to the Guam Beverage Container Recycling Act of 2010, and the power of the Guam Environmental Protection Agency to implement the same. Madam Speaker, this Bill 108, I know it was a long title, but it seeks to do four main things. It changes the definitions to bring the law more in line with the successes of what is happening in California and Hawaii, who has had similar legislation that had to be changed because of implementation problems. These changes will head off further implementation problems for Guam if this is not, if the changes are not implemented. This also eliminates the artificial distinction between on- and off-premises consumption. This change, the change makes it clear that the deposit fees apply to all containers, whether for on- or off-premises consumption. And it also clarifies that the Guam Environmental Protection Agency has the power and the authority to implement the bottle law. And then, it allows for the use of the recycling revolving fund to be used to fund the implementation of the law. And if you had gone to the, I mean, for those who had gone to the public hearing will know that there have been major setbacks because of the implementation process and the lack of funding resources. Madam Speaker, I want to share for the record that this bill is a result of many months of collaboration between our office, Guam Environmental Protection Agency, Region 9, and U.S. EPA. And my commitment is that I will continue to work to protect our environment. And this is just one of the many steps that we are taking in that direction. I want to say that EPA and our office, our committee, has been working, again, like I said earlier, with some of the states and Region 9, more specifically so with Hawaii, to see what their obstacles were and what some of the impediments were as they were, as their law was implemented. And the revisions in this Bill 108 addresses that so that we don't have to go through those same impediments. And I just want to say that I'd be remiss if I didn't thank all the Region 9 and Hawaii for working closely with our Guam office and with the council members and with our committee's legal counsel to make sure that we address the concerns. And of course, the definitions are there. And at this time, if there's any section that our colleagues would like to go through, I'm more than welcome to entertain that. So, thank you for giving me this opportunity. I really do hope that our colleagues give it its favorable consideration as we look at providing a cleaner, greener, and healthier Guam. I will continue to promote that as we continue to protect our environment. I want to say that implementing this bottle bill law will literally turn trash, our trash, into a commodity and bring additional resources and have additional pockets to our residents here, Madam Speaker. And I just want to say that even as the Bottle Bill Act was passed in 2010, everywhere I go, people ask me, you know, I've been saving my aluminums. I've been saving my bottles. When is it going to start? I thought you had a pilot project program. How come they're not, EPA's not fully implementing that? And, you know, you two know that the media has shared great concern because they think this is a viable bill and that it needs to be implemented. But we, as the committee, found out that there were some impediments. And in order to make sure that those impediments don't happen to us that are happening to a couple of the other states, and working closely with Region 9, that these provisions will correct those impediments. So, thank you again, and I hope my colleagues support this effort.
You're welcome, Senator. On the motion, Senator Alimpiako, you recognize.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I rise as just a point of inquiry. If we can go to page 2, I just want to clarify some questions. On line 27, the language refers to metal deposit beverage container manufactured in or imported into Guam for both on- and off-premises consumption. Just as a matter of clarification, is there, the language that precedes it would imply that it applies to all beverages, containers that meet this definition that are imported into Guam are going to be subject to this deposit fee? Is there a need for the language for both on- and off-premises consumption?
Senator, do you yield to the question?
I think as we look at that provision, I don't know if you know, Madam Speaker, that a lot of the beverage containers that are purchased today are not bought on, they're not bought off-base, they're bought on-base. And 40% of those containers are purchased from inside the base. And in order for us to make this program work, in the past, there was concerns that Guam was not considered a domestic destination. It was considered an international destination, and that requiring deposits to those containers wouldn't have to apply. Even if the military has strongly stated, in the past eight years, we've been trying to get this legislation passed into law. But there was always the concern of how the military will engage based on what they feel are the parameters. Usually, even in the United States, beverages, I mean, if there is a law that exists in reference to beverage containers and allowing for the deposits, that what happens outside, the same law applies. But they used to take Guam in a different matter. But I want to state for the record, and I know you know this, Madam Speaker, that we, after all these years of deliberation and working with anybody that we can think of and the different leaders within the military perspective, that their engagement and working closely with the committee and U.S., I mean Guam EPA, and as far as implementing this beverage, that they will be very supportive. And in order for us to do that, we even had to work with Congress, our Congress, Congresswoman's office, to make sure that there was that support. Because we know that it would be off-balance if only those beverage containers that are purchased on off-site for consumption, if those were to be the only ones to be, to put that beverage deposit on, then it wouldn't be a fair shake. So, we had to make sure that that provision was put in.
Madam Speaker, I'm not sure that clarifies the question. And it begs another question, that I'm not sure the language is clear in. So, is it correct that the beverages that are sold on-base are not subject to this deposit?
No, that's not the case anymore. And I also want to say that of consumption for beverage containers are also the ones dealing with, that are sold in bar establishments.
Yeah, that just goes back to the language that precedes it. It says here, metal deposit beverage container manufactured in or imported into Guam for both on- and off-premise consumption. If it's inclusive of all containers imported into Guam, why the distinction between for both on- and off-premises if it applies to all containers imported into Guam? It seems as though the language is not needed. And if it is, just trying to get the clarification.
Then, I think maybe for clarification, he's asking whether the on- or off would be necessary?
It's needed.
And if we could just get an explanation as to why it's needed? Because the language before it says, basically, it says, all of these containers imported into Guam. It doesn't matter if it's for consumption, offer, on-premises. It's every container imported into Guam, if I read it correctly. And if I, if I'm misunderstanding it, I just want to be clear so that I can understand the bill and make a good decision on whether I support it or not. So, the question is, if it applies to all beverage containers of this type, imported into Guam, why the distinction of both on- and off-beverage or on- and off-premise consumption?
Senator, do you yield to that question?
If I'm not mistaken, again, based on the distinction, the establishments that are purchasing the beverages have a different, have a different category in as far as the fees that are assessed. And it was the request from EPA that, inclusive of all that, but they needed to say those beverage containers that are consumed on premises. And I, for me, that was based on the request of what EPA wanted and working closely with the different bar establishments and how the different bar establishments and how those containers are purchased, how those beverage containers are purchased, whether it be wholesale or retail, or there's a certain purchase requirement for that.
I think maybe we'll take a brief recess here and see if we can get you two together to figure this out. Senator Alimtiaku, you still have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. And thank you for the opportunity to recess and discuss with the author. I believe we came up with a solution. We have a small amendment to proffer. On page two, line 25, we would like to add the following language after the word distributor to read "and importer."
Okay, so to, after the word distributor, page two, line 25, to add "and importer." On the amendment, any objections? No objections, so ordered.
Madam Speaker, we'd also like to proffer, I'd also like to proffer another amendment on page two, line 27.
Okay.
Where we remove the following language from line 27, "for both on and off premises consumption."
Just to delete, so with Guam. So, page two, line 27, after the word Guam, add a period and delete the words "for both on and off premises consumption." On that amendment, Senator Ada? You have a question, or you want recess?
I had a question on the earlier amendment that you made.
So, you want to do that on the mic, or you want? But we're on this amendment first and then I can, okay, so on this amendment then to delete the words then, "for both on and off premises consumption," no objections, so ordered. Now, Senator Ada, I know we had passed it, but you want to go ahead and state then at least, so have some discussion on?
Yes, Madam Speaker. I guess I just want clarification. On page two, there, line 25, we amended that to read "every deposit beverage distributor or," did you say "or?"
And importer.
Or "and importer."
And.
So, then, so then, we're saying then that that is one and the same person. So, let's say Ambrose would be an importer and a distributor. But you may have a small grocery store who only imports a certain drink, but does not distribute it to, as we know, as we define the term, distribute it, you know, for, to other retail establishments. So, then, this would not apply to that importer, because he is not an importer and distributor. So, maybe it really should be a distributor or importer. So, we probably need to go back and revisit that amendment.
So, I would go ahead then and entertain that amendment. So, what would the, is it "an" or "or," or just "or"?
No, be, well, just simply, it should be then, "every deposit beverage distributor or importer."
Or.
Or importer.
So, delete "and" and replace with "or." Any objections? No objections, so ordered. Thank you, Senator. Senator Alimtiaku, you want to continue?
Yes, Madam Speaker. I do have several other questions, point of inquiries, as well as amendments. Shall we break for recess? Shall we recess, or shall we keep going?
Well, we have 20 minutes, so we can continue.
Okay, excellent. So, in regards to line 29.
On page?
On page two, line 29. I believe there might be just a small grammatical error there, unless I read it incorrectly. The fee shall be, begin? I'm not sure if that was.
The fee shall be? What is your, I'm sorry.
I'm just trying to figure out the language. The fee shall be, begin, at a rate?
Well, shall begin at.
Right, so do we want to strike "be"?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. Here, right.
So, just a small grammatical amendment.
Okay, so delete the "be," so the fee shall begin. Delete "be," no objections, so ordered.
And then, just proceeding down the, on the same line, line 29, Madam Speaker, I read this, I read this fee to be .5 cents, which means one half of a cent. And I'm not sure that that was the author's intent, that it should be five cents.
Five cents.
So, I'd like to amend that to read five cents instead of zero point five cents.
So, on the amendment then, to delete the zero point, and it should read five cents. No objections, so ordered. And we have to make sure probably throughout, that if that is mentioned, you want to make that general amendment?
So, if we can request a technical amendment for everywhere that it does appear, that it is corrected in the bill?
Yes.
Shall begin at a rate of five cents.
On that amendment then, to make sure that it be consistent throughout the body of the bill to reflect the five cents rather than half of a five cent. On that amendment, no objections, so ordered. Senator, you may continue.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. And if I could just request for a point of inquiry on page three, line three, if the author would kindly yield to a question regarding the facilitation of the beverage containers that are exported for sale outside of Guam. If we go back to the preceding language, we're requiring these distributors or importers to pay this deposit beverage container fee when they import it. Are they then going to have the department refund any beverages that are then subsequently exported off of Guam? And if not, then what are the, I don't believe the bill addresses the mechanics as to how that is supposed to be accounted for.
Senator, do you yield to the question?
Madam Speaker, some of the beverage containers that go, that come into Guam are just temporarily stayed here before it goes into the other jurisdictions. And they shouldn't, they're not going to be imposed because there's a tracking of what stays and what gets distributed to other places. And the reason why we need that in is so that we don't, we don't charge them for something that's not going to be purchased here on Guam. So, that's why that was needed. That concern was also brought up by EPA, because the distributors were saying, why are we getting assessed for something that's not going to stay here on Guam?
Senator Alimtiaku?
Thank you, thank you, Madam Speaker, and thank you to the author of the bill. And just to expound on that, where in the bill does it address the mechanics of how that is to happen? Is there a regulatory body that is going to, is it Customs? Is it Revenue Tax? How are we going to ensure that? Because, you know, the one thing that we don't want is for, to basically say, these 40,000 cans are going to be exported, so, you know, don't subject me to that tax, but we don't really know whether or not it is subsequently exported. Is there some sort of reconciliation? And which regulatory agency will be responsible for that? Because I'm not sure it addresses it in the bill.
Senator, do you yield?
Yes, thank you, Madam Speaker. And I really want to thank the good senator for that inquiry. I want to note for the record that based on the history and the implementation of the Bottle Bill as it was passed into law, there is a council that works with EPA. EPA will, there will be rules and regulations to how all this would be delineated. And of course, it goes through the council. So, it is, the regulatory agency for that is Guam EPA, and there is a council to that. But as, existing in law.
Maybe I should just kind of ask that in the existing law and definitions that you do, when you say department, you've listed that it's EPA? Or maybe the possibility of when it says department, should we indicate EPA? I'm just, because unless you want to go back to the original legislation that was passed that defines who the regulatory agent is, agency is?
Madam Speaker, I think maybe just a reference, maybe to such law, maybe an amendment that says in accordance with the specific law that the author is referring to, may just bolster the actual section of the bill? And if we could just ask for a small recess, just so we can cite the appropriate law?
Right, we'll take a brief recess. I have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. We did clear up that the reference to the department, that the definitions of the department in the prior sections of the bill does identify the regulatory agency that will be responsible. in the prior sections of the bill does identify the regulatory agency that will be responsible. And so the, I do have a point of inquiry, if the author would yield to a question...
Senator Munir Barnes has a question for you.
Just regarding page three, I'm not sure if this was going to be part of the technical amendment, but page three, line five, there's a fee, reference to a fee that begins at one cent per deposit beverage container. And I know that we had previously corrected the reference to the five cents per deposit beverage container. Is this, is this in reference to a different deposit, or should this also be corrected to five cents?
Senator, do you yield to the question on page three, line five?
I'm sorry?
It's supposed to be five cents also?
Five cents.
Okay.
Should be five.
So...
And I think that's...
I'm sorry.
Okay, and you did make that amendment, earlier amendment, that throughout the bill where it makes any reference to the cost, that it be reflected as five cents. But thank you for catching that.
And that kind of begged the question as to the reference to the deposit fee again. And I didn't know if it was a separate fee or potentially a redemption amount, because I think the bill does reference a redemption. So if we could just take a short recess, Madam Speaker, just to clarify it?
Yeah.
Okay. We're going to take a brief recess.